President with superintendent along with our attorney and would you stand for prayer and praise please?
Yes, Father, we come at this moment thanking you for this day, thanking you for life, and asking yet, Lord, for your mercies and your kindness, for, Lord, we do need your blessings. We ask for wisdom to sing in as we assemble that we would take care of the affairs and the business of our schools, for our community, our parents, our children, that, Lord, in all that we would do, it would be first honoring to you, and second, for the very best, for our community. We thank you for your blessings of the past, of the present, and yet, Lord, we pray for our community tonight, for our state, for our country, for the world that we live in, as we are facing these unserved times in many ways, and, Lord, I just pray that you would give us wisdom and strength and courage to do what is right and to be what you would have for each of us to be. Bless our community, help us, Lord, we pray. We ask these things in your name, dear Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time for us to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Ms. Carlton makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody here opposed? So carried. The approval of our minutes of May the 10th, the legal meeting and regular school meeting.
Motion.
Ms. Agnew makes the motion.
I need to add, I need to make a correction with the minute.
Okay, on the minute?
Yes.
Second. I'll do the second, she wants to.
Okay.
On the, it was for the approval of the purchase request for 4.01 dash two? I oppose, but it said that we all voted in favor, so I just wanted to note that correction. Number two. Yeah. Thank you.
Is everybody still okay with that correction? Motion is seconded, been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Aye, so carried. Comes a portion of our agenda tonight for items of concern presented by the public, and do we have any that have come in on that?
We have it at 5:30, we didn't have any.
Okay. Okay, we have none. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is routine financial items, that's purchase orders and so forth. This is a consent by the approval and adoption of the budget. 4.02 is award of bids has been approved by the, as a consent, according to approval of the agenda. 4.06, financial report, which consent has been approved.
Danny, can I ask a quick question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a quick question? Okay. It's, it's, I'm still in agreeance with 4.01, two and three, four, but I just have a quick question with number one and number three and four, Danny.
I noted number one was, okay, number one was.
Is that all we needed, was just fifty?
No, that's all she was allowed to move out of that pot of money.
Okay.
Probably enough for fifty. So she went in and had to get a common amendment to a pot of money that she already had, so we were only able to get fifty from there.
Okay. And can you just get a board, a brief, a brief explanation of what is Canvas? Like, I was talking with administrator the other day, and they kind of compared Canvas to Teams, but I actually kind of thought it was more similar to where the students would like actually be on like a online, I guess, what is online, but I actually thought it was gonna be software. But they said it was kind of like more like a warehouse where y'all can put like several different things in it.
It's a plat, it's a platform we can use.
Same.
There. You want to explain Canvas? Sure.
Good afternoon. All right, so I've read this, when I left my office on the ceremony on number one, we've submitted a request for another hundred.
Oh, Kim, Kim, we're coming to the mic for you.
Sorry. I was trying to, I'm kind of, I remember, pardon me, right?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
We submitted a request for an additional hundred and fifty laptops through Title One. We only have the money for fifty through Title Four. With the state's eight hundred that they gave us, that gave, that gave us a pretty good number to start working with to check out. And again, we're in the process of collecting back those that we checked out to prepare for whatever may come in August. So you wanted to know about number three as well?
Yes, I just, I just kind of thought it was more of a, an actual system, but one of the administrators kind of explained it as it was similar to Zoom and Microsoft Teams.
It's, it's very comprehensive. It has, Teams and Zoom would be just one little piece in part.
Okay.
Basically, Canvas is a full system. Say if I were a student in Canvas, my teacher could teach me live or videotape. Say I had an assignment where I had to do a code read, a brief after passage, I could video myself and upload that assignment right back to the teacher. So it becomes, it also has an automatic grading pass-through. So as the teacher, say they score tests or a student takes up some sort of assignment, once they grade it in Canvas, it has an automatic pass-back of the focus, so it drops directly into the grading book. It has a parent communication feature that's quite a bit more intuitive than Focus does. This would enable us to provide education in whatever manner we needed to in August, whether we needed to have a blended or virtual or whatever, we would be able to meet the educational needs of our kids.
So would teachers like go out there and log assignments in it, or are they out there to go out there and just assign students assignment?
It's, it's, have you ever taken an online college course? No. Well, it's sort of like you have a syllabus and you have, have assignments for certain days, and you have a calendar. So then it becomes really cool for parents in that if I have an English assignment, a math assignment, science and social studies, they don't have my calendar of what's due this week. It's really, really neat. Teachers can teach right on their laptops wherever they are. This past spring, if we, if we had had a learning management system, we could have called it LMS, an LMS system, we would have had automatic access to all of the state's online virtual curriculum. We could have picked up the school on the twentieth of March and not missed a week, but because as a district, we've never purchased a full-blown LMS, we didn't have the capacity to receive the FLBS virtual curriculum. So that put us in, you know, we could have had everything from kindergarten through twelfth grade, a hundred courses for free. And Governor DeSantis, I've, I've heard through the grapevine that if something happens and we don't come back to school in August, that there may be a possibility that that curriculum will remain free to districts until we can open our doors again. So we'll be prepared. I'm trying to make sure we are in a better spot, in a better spot.
So it's Canvas is an LMS?
Yes, ma'am.
So that covers us.
We reviewed two. Ms. Pearson and I spent countless hours. We also shared information with leadership team. We shared orientation type of meetings and webinars with everyone. It just seemed that Canvas, I'm trying to get the tech word, I'm looking to the tech word, integrates or would integrate more easily with our platform and what we use. So that's why Canvas was, was selected by the table.
I've seen where you sent the email saying this, that I was selected, but I, I really didn't read it, so I was just, when I was talking with one another day, I don't know why, but I, I thought it was something similar like I read.
And Study Island, Study Island, sort of like I read, and we have certain schools. Study Island is utilized a lot, if you go on high school levels. I read it, it's used more at the K-five level. So you're gonna see a ton of purchase orders from us in the next, from my, my department in the next few weeks, for just software that we use. We use Study Island for over a decade.
Is that what number four you?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And Study Island has courses where if you have a student and say AP Human Geography at the high school, they can go through a Study Island prep course and prepare for AP Human Geography. So it's, you know, it's something that we use.
So it is just purchased for twenty twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
Paul, kidding?
Okay, that's the 4.02 been approved by consent. 4.06, financial report has been approved by consent of the agenda. 4.10, this name is financial items, has been approved by consent. Our grant, 6.01, approved by consent. 6.02, approved by consent. 6.03 also was approved through the agenda, consent.
Danny, is 6.01, is that for summer school purposes or is that for 2021?
6.01, which we number?
Is number one, the Title One Part Eight?
Yeah, that's for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all right. Well, when I see this, I don't think it's.
Any other questions? If not, moves is down 6.02, which is an action item, summer school schedule for twenty twenty Big Ben Technical College. Ms. Agnew makes the motion?
Second.
Ms. Mathis seconded. Any further questions?
Just, let me ask her, it's not really, I don't really have a question about that because I don't have an issue with it, but as far as we're concerned, it's still based on the, you know, keeping the students, the class sizes.
The ten of us.
To a minimum, right?
Just still gonna put together a protocols with recommendations and planning protocols and all that they will have to follow.
Any others? If not, motion seconded, been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? So carried. 8.01, approval of agreements and contracts, under consent by the approval of the agenda. Any questions?
Danny, is number one under 8.01, is that something similar to, I guess, what Sharon just described as the LMS, this is bringing to pace?
8.01, number one?
Yeah.
That's our, for.
It said, when I was reading through it, it was sounded as, sounded like it was offering some type of virtual curriculum option, or is it just a system?
That's our virtual franchise that we run through PACE. So if they do FLBS, we run through PACE.
Okay.
That's an option that they can, we can run through PACE. But that's a contract.
And what is the M-HAT?
What number?
The 8.02 consent item modification of MOU by in between University of South Florida and Towne County School District?
That's something with, no, I don't, isn't it, Dan? It was, it's on the, it was on the agenda. But when I looked at it, it's something to do with mental health.
I had just a comment I wanted to make on 8.01 on the buses.
Yes, that's with youth mental health, that's the contract we did with South Florida, I believe, right? Yes.
Okay. Danny, on the, on 8.01, number twelve on the buses, now, we're, we're confident that that's gonna be all we're gonna need.
All the buses we're gonna need? I'm sure Wendy would love to get more, but that will, I mean, honestly, that's, we've got, we had two or three buses that were running on pretty much their last leg.
Well, we're gonna probably need to run those still.
Might need to. So this three is replaced, those three, and we were spending more on repairs than what we wanted to lease, so maybe we just kept four million, it didn't make sense.
It's just for two.
It's just two. Okay, I'm sorry.
Where were you with the natural pass?
I've not heard any more on that. That was all hot and heavy, and we turned in an application, did some information, and then nothing.
And we haven't started the auction on the old buses yet?
We did, but we bought it, they bought it because that's when we first COVID hit, and the gentleman of the business recommended we pull it, so that way we could, you know, his business would do it as well, so it was just a recommendation.
I have a gentleman that's interested from another school, so whenever you do, you let me know, I'll let him know.
I think, though, that we need to hold those until we figure out what's gonna happen with transportation.
We could, thing you're gonna run into is we don't have enough, right now, we probably don't have enough drivers to fill all those seats, would be the.
Are you talking about having to space them out? That's what she's got a good point.
There's a couple of good ones we can look at that. I'll talk with Wendy about that.
When will we know that?
I got a little bit of information I'll share at the end, hopefully sooner than later.
Any other questions on 8.01? If not, 8.02 was also approved by consent, by the approval of the agenda.
That was one, can you get your information on that?
This brings us down to item eleven, school calendars. Now, this is action item, approval of school calendars. Item number one, those key term dates for our twenty twenty twenty-one budget.
I'll make a motion to approve that, but I do notice on there that it does state that all those meetings will start at five thirty for those public hearings and public meetings.
I thought we were done at five forty-five.
These are trims, I don't know if that has any impacts, but that's on, was it actually booked, gentlemen?
Actually booked that, but that, she, it can, I'm sure it can be booked. It kind of was just.
Motion?
Motion.
Without a motion, you second.
Second.
Okay. Mathis next, second. Okay, we approved the trim dates for the budget, and as Ms. Carlton made the motion for five thirty beginning on the date of those times, five thirty.
Wasn't that, wasn't it changed at the five forty-five?
No, I didn't say that, I just said, I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew that it did say five thirty, although, on here, what Ashley said to us.
Isn't that something that we should, we need to correct now, Brenda?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know if it can, if it can change or not.
Has it been published yet?
No. I mean, just on board docs, but not as approved. I'm sure it's probably, she probably just used the one from last year and didn't fix that. I'm assuming that. I think whatever we hope, when we do publish that, it has to be that time. You know what I mean? I could be wrong. It's a good book.
I think it can be fixed, I think it can be fixed.
So now she's trying to change it if you wanna modify any of them now.
What's Carrie's board?
I'm okay with doing it at five forty-five if we can legally do it, but some of these things are got by statute.
She says if it has, if it's been published, but this hasn't been published yet.
A statute require call out on some of those, on this particular one, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think it sets a time certain, I think it has to be after long, so we can participate, so I'll look it up quickly, but I think you're okay with, if the pleasure of the board is to change it to five forty-five, and if that's what you'd like to do, I think you'll be fine. I'll look it up, and then if we need to revise it, then we will.
So, so my motion would be to make it at five forty-five.
Okay, motion is second for the trim dates, and of course, the start time will have to be five forty-five.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? So carried. Then item number two is school board meeting calendar for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the calendar, but I would like for us to delete the first meeting on here, the July the seventh, because we'll be meeting June the sixteenth, and then we'll be July the twenty-first and July the twenty-eighth, and August the fourth, we'll be meeting three weeks in a row, and we, I don't see why we would need the one right after the fourth of July.
The July the seventh, but delete that or postpone that meeting, whatever.
I'll make a motion, or she made the motion, I'll make the second.
You second that, Ms. Agnew?
I don't mean to say that's what you want.
No, with the two of us in here for today, July the twenty-first and twenty-eighth. So we still have four meetings after tonight before school started, starts back.
Anything else? If not, motion seconded, then aye, do it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? So carried. Item number twelve point oh one, routine personnel listing was approved by the consent of, approved of the agenda, some consent agenda. Have any questions on that? Okay. If not, that brings us down to twelve point oh nine, which is an action item, redeployment of professional continuing contract personnel, teachers.
I make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Mathis, next motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Agnew, seconded.
I have a question. Danny, what guidelines are, have we made sure everyone has been notified regarding what extensions has been provided by D O E?
As far as the, with the test?
Yes, far as individuals that was probably due for a certification, and now those states have been extended.
Right.
So do we have some type of plan in place far as how they're going to make sure that they still need?
Yeah, with the waiver, with the state's offer, a lot of them have already signed up the technical test, but with free, I mean, we've got some, but the earliest they can get is on February to get in there. So with the state offering the waiver, so not all of those should be held harmless.
Okay. Did we do something different with the contract language, or we didn't worry about that since they're tenure people?
Throughout the sister tenure, you really don't have to worry about that.
I just wanna make sure everybody's able to take advantage, because I think with extension now, it's free versus them having to pay, so I don't think there should be a real issue far as that requirement being met.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure that anybody that has some spin out of field or anything are pretty much all annual contract teachers, like all the continual, have all their stuff together.
Right, I was just speaking in terms of the ones that were just following with their, June thirtieth deadline, but all of that has been extended.
Motion seconded, then aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? So carried. Brings us down to item twelve point one six, job description revision approval, and then item number one is the job description for the director of the business Big Ben Technical College.
Motion. Second.
Do we have a motion? Okay, Ms. Agnew. And we have a second.
I'm second.
Okay, Ms. Carlton, seconded. Any discussion?
Number four, I, I still feel something we, we useful, I, I really don't see useful number four on here. I think one, two, and three is more than satisfactory, since with the revision, a lot of the need of the job description has been removed, so, I mean, statutes require us to meet certain requirements far as qualifications, so with us enhancing them, I don't think we should have in here that it's subject to board approval. I think we should be aligned with what statute requires, especially given since that statute do have certain processes where these individuals can make sure they, they're meeting these requirements if they're needing some type of additional training. So I, I mean, I like what changes have been made far as number two, and I feel like number three is very needed, again, given that this is a CTE area, a CTE area, but far as statute, I just don't see what we need number four on here, far as under qualification.
Danny, did you, was there a reason, was that one of the ones that some of the others had suggested that you add to that?
That was, was it Walton? It was one of the ones they suggested, and I know with like on the principal side, reaching out to D O E, to talk with several other superintendents, one thing that, just like I guess there's been, there is a shortage of teachers, I guess there's starting to be a shortage of administrators as well, so they're starting to be, they're starting to let up on some of the requirements to help with leaders in the state, but that does give you a little bit of room that if something changes, you know, I mean, it's still gotta be approved, it's still gotta go through you, so.
Does it, wouldn't that help in a case of an emergency as well?
Would statute have language for that? Statute has language, well, we're in a position, and it's a, in case of emergency, statute does have language in it that states an individual, I mean, a district will be able to feel the need for that position based off the need. So that's what I'm saying, the coverage, what you're stating far as extensions and the concern far as recruitment is all embedded in statute, so, I mean, we even have it in our statute. When I was looking at our statute, we have it at the bottom, I think it's on page three oh six, I think it is, where it's talking about technical personnel, far as vocational technical personnel, but it has it, those statutes at the bottom of it, and if you go to those statutes, it's stating there those special circumstances. But again, like I said, my concern is far as the long run, because as a board member, the only thing that comes to us is recommendation. We don't vet the employee, that's the responsibility of the superintendent and the H R. So technically, other than what's provided to us, we, we're not aware if this person meet qualifications or not, so we don't know if it's truly upon what we feel appropriate or if what's been recommended to us.
We got a motion, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote?
No.
Any other motion? So carried. Item number two is the assistant director of Big Ben Technical College, D O E, job description for that position. Now, a motion is seconded from that.
Motion.
Ms. Mathis, next, that motion.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Agnew, seconded. Any discussion?
I didn't say it the same, because that was, that was the same, I'm actually trying to pull it back, my computer keeps on running.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? So carried. Brings us down to item eighteen, which is, which was approved by the, by the option of the agenda. Some are asked for our school system here for the four days, one of the extended hours for days, offices and schools, so we don't try, this is for the month of June and for July. Coming out for the items of interest by the superintendent and board, Ms. Paul, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. So the superintendent, I know you've got some things I want to share, and so you have the board.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief and real quick. So last night, we had the opportunity, several of the superintendents of the district had a sit-down meeting with Commissioner Corcoran to talk about next year and what we were looking at, and so it came out that there should be some recommendations from D O E for reopening school coming out either later this week. And so it came out that there should be some recommendations from D O E for reopening school coming out either later this week or early next week, some guidelines, uh, to help us move forward with what we need to be looking at. Those are the guidelines that we can work with and understand. So D O E, including the governor, they wanna see our kid back in, back in school. Make sure we can do that safely with them returning to school. So one thing that we had done, uh, we have, we sent out a survey to our parents and staff to kinda see, you know, get a feeling from our community what they're looking at. So so far, we have had, uh, four hundred and ninety-three responses, which I think that's pretty good from, uh, Bay County. We've used a similar survey that Bay County did and their law partner, we are, I think he only had eleven, did eleven hundred or twenty-one hundred, uh, responded back. So in the, it's kinda see the graph of the parents that responded. So it's pretty evenly across the board. I was kinda surprised at that, see that across the board. But the large majority who did create the survey was parents. We did have, uh, teachers, we had a hundred and thirty-eight teachers or staff completed, three hundred and thirty-six parents and twelve students actually completed the survey. Uh, but what, what I've been hearing across the state is seventy percent of ser- when I do a survey, seventy percent is wanting to be back in, uh, block and more building, regular school, of course, social distancing, making sure we can be safe. And our survey is following a lot, a lot along with that and right at sixty-nine percent. So that was interesting, uh, with that. This is kinda a little bit of a, a split, fifty-seven percent of the parents said they do not prefer their child to wear a mask. While forty-two percent said they would prefer for their child to wear, wear a mask. For our employees, uh, sixty-one percent said they would not prefer to wear a mask if at work. And thirty-nine percent said, uh, they would wear a mask. We found out, this was interesting too, that right at seventy-eight percent of our students had computers at home if we needed to do distance learning. Twenty-two percent of those responded did not. Uh, we asked them, could you get internet if you have, just because you don't have a device? Could you get internet? Is it available to you? And ninety-three percent said they could get internet, uh, for some form at their house. And then if they responded no, we wanted to know what we would need to provide if they didn't have internet. Uh, thirty-eight percent, um, said it is available in the area, but they don't have it. Another twenty-eight percent said satellite, twenty-three percent said cellular. And then ten percent said no internet will work in, in their area. Which I was only eight, uh, responded to that. So that was, I mean, that was kinda encouraging to know that most all of our students, if at some point they're not just with distance learning, which will look very different from what we've done now, they do have the capability to get internet or we can at least provide them something so they'll have, um, internet access.
But now, wait a minute, that number is based on those, that completely is served, right?
Yeah, okay. We're gonna leave it open a couple more days.
That's what I was gonna say, once the deadline more.
We had talked about today, 'cause I wanted to have this data in, but we'll leave it open, uh, probably till at least Wednesday or Thursday to give parents. Uh, we did an all call out yesterday, yesterday, out to everyone, asking to complete. I mean, I had a parent that called, he was having trouble getting on. I said, well, just, here, I'll, you just send me your answers and I'll go for you and plug in. So that way, 'cause we really wanna get the data. I'd also ask our team, uh, to be working on a plan, you know, four different scenarios, four next year. One plan being the worst case, the other plan being that we're back, you know, just normal. Uh, we also needed a plan for if we start back and then say we get hit and we're out for three weeks. You know, we need a plan for that gap. We also need a plan for some parents that not want their kids to come back. So we need a plan to have a platform, which we will through Kansas. But we, we got four, uh, scenarios put together here. It's just kind of a rough draft. We've been working on, I T's been looking at it. You know, Sharon's office along with Connie to make sure we have what we need to make these plans, uh, work. But I'm hoping the guidelines are gonna really help us when they come out to know that we can get students back in school where they belong safely. And then one of the, you know, one of the possibilities is two, if they were to, to say that we had to, that spacing in a classroom, we figured we could only house, if we had to do the six-foot spacing for everybody, we would only probably average twelve to fifteen students in a classroom. So that would mean we would have to do alternating schedules where a student may come to school two days, uh, with the teacher. And then, uh, the other three days, they would be doing digital learning on their own. We talked about was group A would come Monday, Tuesday. We would have Wednesday to clean the school, to disinfect, the teacher regroup, get everything back together, you know, with the whole line. And then Thursday, Friday, group B would, would come in. But I mean, that's, we hope we don't have to go to that, but like I said, we are planning just, just in case. Um, I do feel like we will be back, we'll be back in the school in August.
Have you addressed the lunch?
No, we have not. We're hoping that that's gonna provide some guidance. You know, as it would, as it would sit right now, I mean, lunch and breakfast would have to be served in the classroom. And we would not be able to go to the, to the cafeteria. P E would also be a, be a challenge. So, I mean, every scenario you think of, a whole nother, um,
Create something else.
create something else.
They've created a new sport, a gaming sport. Um, seriously, they, I got the, um, did you copy that email?
I did too.
I thought that was pretty cool.
It's actually something.
They're, they're encouraging. They want sports to get back. They want ban all the activities. They're gonna be encouraging that, you know, make sure we do it safely. But we know kids need some normalcy, their mental health. We've, we've got, uh, really good, good at that, we make sure we're taking care of that. So, uh, I think that was everything I had. So I'll just share this, uh, so I'll share this.
You're gonna give that information about the survey to Department of Education? Is that gonna help with their decision-making?
No, I think it will help with us to move forward. Depending on the guideline, what I'd like to do, if it's part of our task force, to come in to look at the data, to look at. It depends on the guidelines we get, but to use this data to help us make the best decisions to reopen, to reopen school.
Commissioner Corcoran have any other thing of the, the guidelines that be coming out that?
Uh, he, he talked a little bit about, uh, budget. So hopefully we're crossing our fingers we're gonna be okay on that.
I have a question on that. We, I saw where we have the twelve things that we can use that CARE Act money for. Is that going to be going for that for that million seventy thousand that we got?
You mean, like, just at one time?
What, yes, is that?
Just one time?
Just one time, so that would be used if we had to do the distancing and, um, rearranging and putting up shields and?
You know, we have to use our extra bus runs. Uh, I think, I hope we can use that for, um, remediation of some type. We come in and provide extra resources to our teachers or small group, 'cause we realize kids are gonna come back behind. Especially K five, middle school students can kinda hold their own, high school students are okay with digital. But pre-K to five is taking a huge, a huge step back. Um, it's just, it's hard to deal with those young children at that age. So we will want to provide as many resources as we can to try to catch up. Now, there is some talk that there may be some ten percent, some funds coming down, ten percent to do a July summer school. But we all were kinda buzzing about that, because if we're looking at doing a July summer school, that needs to get moved in fast. But, you know, he just mentioned that. He didn't give us a lot of details on that. So we're kind of, we were all kinda scratching our head when he left about how it meant to happen, uh, just like a ballgame. But if that's the direction they, and they can fund it for us, I think, you know, we'll come together and figure it out.
Is he still looking at August to attend?
Yes, they're still looking at August, our.
I think you and I talked this morning for a little bit and, uh, today's, this is our first meeting this month, which is today's plus the second. Our next meeting would be the sixteenth. And I hope that by the sixteenth, we should have some directions. Hopefully more than what we, you know, what we got now, what we know, what we're kinda looking at and what possible scenario that, uh,
That can make, yeah.
But even with that, you're not looking, but, uh, still, even tonight, you know, if you go back first through and first block, we're not looking about nine weeks away to that right now. So it's, it's right here, really.
I do wanna give them credit, their meeting, his meeting, with some of the top doctors in the nation, top, uh, medical schools in the nation, to take recommendations from them. You know, one thing that he's finding out that it's like point zero zero, I think it's four or five zeros. Then a five chance of a student catching the, the virus. With a staff member, it was like point zero zero to four or five. So he talked about like temperature checks. There is a lot of research about that, of course, with adult children. They're thinking you're gonna cause more harm, you're creating more danger trying to do temperature checks, you're stopping the side of the road. Because students just aren't carried, you know, their chances of getting it are very, very slight. It was a good meeting.
Um, can I use the agent, 'cause I thought the numbers was going up with them?
I mean, that's what he was telling us, uh, yesterday from research he had gotten.
Forty-three percent of the deaths, so maybe there's some, that's what, that's what he's showing now.
Now, the plans that you guys are looking at, does that include the option where the parent that does not want to bring a kid at the school and they would have the option to have digital?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They could do all, all digital. We would use Canvas as a platform. And like Miss Hafok said, the thing with Canvas is we can be picture, 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 they take two or, two or three days, two or three weeks off and they're not gonna miss it. They're still gonna continue to get it.
Now, is, um, D O E looking at providing any type of, um, assistance? Cause I know right now we don't have any if, if they have. But I think there's still a way that you guys have been able to look at learning gangs. Um, so would D, D O E offer any assistance with that? Far as if we do have some kids that wind up getting behind? Would they offer us any type of intervention far as the district?
I think they're looking at is try, trying to provide additional funding to help, um, with those children who are behind.
Just funding, not resource?
I'll be there.
I think it would be interesting if they can offer some type of support, like they offer when they come in and help schools that have, you know, fallen grade of them. I think it would be great if they start to get got and they see that a lot of students did lose gangs. That they offer the district some type of support with, um, with those concerns. Because, I mean, testing was out of the window this year, but we don't know that that's gonna be next year. And if we find out that our kids, um, you know, have it, you know, slid back versus slid forward, that's gonna make the difference overall.
He had come out and directly said, but what I took from it, from it was assessments will start back next year.
We just kinda just lost a year, basically, or, well, it happened here, I guess, it really important enough to. But we're gonna go ahead and push those kids forward and then
Try to catch them up.
try to catch them up. The ones that aren't capable of catching up, maybe at, at new point, we could really start that mediation.
And I hope we'll be able to identify those children even earlier than that.
I just hate that idea that we're gonna have to worry about that, 'cause students and teachers are already pretty stressed out. And I just think that this is gonna make it ten times worse.
I would say it'd be a good time to have, uh, with our new standards, next year be a base year. And the following years start back with assessments. He's pretty directed that assessments will start.
You need to know where you are. And you need to know how, therefore, you, and y'all need to wait another year to find that out. I believe you will know that.
Thank you. Ms. Daniel, you have anything?
No, I'm just, like I said, I wanna take your more information for what we was, far as getting, um, stuff situated for twenty twenty-one. Um, I'm just want to express a sign that we make sure we're able to get everything that we can, get our hands on far as the resources, um, for our teachers, for our students and just as a di- you know, a district as a whole. I think we need to take advantage of everything. Um, I spoke with her the Friday, was it Friday? Yeah, I spoke with her Friday and I told her that I felt like the graduation parade, I think it did still turn out very nice. Um, it was unfortunate they couldn't do the, you know, downtown piece, but I still think what they did far as going from schools to schools. I really liked it, um, the students being in the cars and being inside the building. So I think next year, if we're back where, you know, somewhat. I think you guys probably should move with y'all that the kids come out and do just like y'all do a homecoming. Cause I think it's just so much nicer, uh, with them being in the car versus walking through the schools or whatever. I did like that.
And they get a trade in this, you know, you got homecoming and follow-up, or they get a trade in them.
Yeah.
And I think all of them, I'm hundred percent, I think almost all of them went on to downtown.
Yeah, I heard some of them went on through the dead路s. But that's why I said, I, I really think that, you know, it would be great if we could go before the city and get, for the city and kind of support and just do the same thing as we do with graduation, um. Because it was to me, I mean, with homecoming, 'cause I, I really enjoyed it or whatever. And I think it does offer the opportunity for the community to help support the graduates if they're not able to attend graduation. I really didn't think that was a good aspect of that parade. Um, I think graduation was very nice. Um, it was different, um, but it was nice. It was, you know, I think I enjoyed, um, 'cause again, I don't know why, but I thought the students was gonna be on, you know. I don't know why, I don't know what I was thinking with all of Jerry right there, but it was nice, you know, with the stage being further. Um, 'cause I think it gave the opportunity for if we was to utilize both sides of the field that people still will be able to see and gonna give view of it. I did get compliments from another county that we've done more than what they seen in some other counties. So I wanted to share that information, um, and that's what really salute the graduation. Um, I would think with them being two, three times outside, that they would have been able to call for what we did, if not more. But from the compliment we got, that we really, you know, showered our, um, showed our students and our community love with our graduation. So I wanted to give that feedback and, um, just, I mean, school is out, so, um, again, just concerned about how we're gonna get through these next few months, we're getting ready for next year. That's just the main concern. But, um, I'm hoping, you know, parents and students can take this time this summer. And, um, like I say, work on, you know, some things that far as learning games, make sure they're reading and just doing different things to keep the kids engaged, so they won't come back too far behind. But I think we just should all rewrap our minds around this, so we can do whatever we can to show support to our students and our teachers. So folks won't feel the amount of stress that's gonna come in August. But other than that, um, I just hope everybody have a good summer. A good start to a summer.
Thank you. Ms. Black?
Um, I'm just, just gonna say the same thing about graduation. I thought it turned out very, very well. Uh, it was such a personal, hot graduation. It was shorter than normal. Um, I think we got through it faster and I think that the families really enjoyed it. And having the screen where it's almost as if you were sitting like right in front of the person that was up there really helped a lot. And live screen, so the whole community can see. To me, that was well worth every penny we may have spent on that. But, uh, I hope maybe next year we can do something similar, um, and go with that. Um, I did like the parade. I thought it was really cool. I think the kids enjoyed that a lot. And I think in our graduation, we're gonna have to start judging these girls' shoes. We had, I remember seeing, you know, every time one of the girls would come down, Karen would be standing there, you gotta get down the step before I hand you this stuff. Because they had the highest field and, and it was really cool to see all the different kinds of shoes. I said, we're gonna have to start have judging this. But I think they really, all the kids enjoyed themselves. But, um,
They could just get higher.
They just get higher and more elaborate and it was just really, so let's see. But, um, another thing I wanted to bring up besides graduation is, of course, we want to have a good summer. But I had the opportunity to go by, uh, new school and look at the pavings. We had that ongoing thing. It looked really good. I appreciate that yellow line. I appreciate that yellow line that has been put there, I think that was, you know, I think that was a giddy. Um, because I was concerned when I saw the traffic flow there before with that, so that's gonna keep a definite thing. And I just had a question on coming out of the Perry primary, um, oh, excuse me, kind of the primary. Looks like they're pouring sidewalk in front of the parking area there to lead to the other sidewalk, is that what they did?
It's to make that parking lot a little bit larger, they had some fender benders in there, cause it's kinda, it's kinda, kinda, kinda tight, especially at lunch and.
Backing out, you mean?
So that's gonna be able to extend it three or four foot to help.
Where are you gonna put the, where you gonna put the fence on top?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is the fence gonna be on that, that I was assuming what I thought was a sidewalk.
It'll be on the other side.
Okay, but where are you gonna put the bumpers?
I talked to Dan about that earlier, we're gonna look at it, we may, uh, something we just talked about today is we may not put the bumpers back, so that way they could even get a little more room. Uh, we just gotta look at it and see, we got that other road that loops around, you know, the drop off. So we couldn't go too much further, cause then we would've been into that, that drop off, drop off loop.
And so when we set this up to begin with, this was not part of what all states are supposed to do.
Right, that's right.
This is all a.
Yes, ma'am.
This is all our dime.
Yeah, we'll have to go back in and seal it, and so that way it will look uniform across there.
Okay, so we're not afraid they're gonna run into the fence?
That's what we gotta look at, that's what me and Dan talking about tonight, today.
Making some rubber bumpers on the fence.
I know, if we put it far, a little bit into the grass area, maybe they would stop it. The plan is right now, to put the bumpers back, is the plan, but I said, we could just, told Dan to go to look at and just give me his opinion, you know, if we could do to get a little bit more room. I know three foot, it's not a lot, but I think it'll help. I mean, I, I know there's been several times some trucks have gotten there and you've got to go there and help them get out, just because.
The thickness of it. One thing too is with this care's money, this million dollars, um, there's twelve items. I would like to, to see on paper where that money's gonna go. I know it's gonna be going forward, but before we just.
Yeah.
Do this number with it, I'd like to see, you know, as a board, what.
We should have a plan.
We should have a plan, and I'd like to see what that might be.
I know, actually, you're gonna make it, you know, you know, actually, so make us break it down and, we, we will.
Yeah, but I think that everybody should know what their, what their part might be, as far as what they might deserve to have for their school or their, their situation. So it would be nice for them to know upfront.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Edgar?
Well, of course, graduation was amazing, I think, I, I loved it. And I, I loved the parade and I, I really felt like this year did end up very special, despite everything. And, and, and my favorite shoes were the brown fur ones, so.
Those were me.
Those were me, okay, those were amazing shoes and they win this year in my, I guess they were, but, but, um, the, the kids all did a, did a wonderful job. And the, and the parade was, you know, something that was just amazing, I, I think we should do it again every year, including the Jumba, Jumbatron. And, uh, of course, um, the going into the summer and worrying about safety for starting the upcoming year. And I wanna think, also think about, um, making sure that our schools are as safe as possible, like we don't come, become complacent with other areas of safety in schools. And so that, another thing about keeping our students, teachers, everybody as safe as possible. So Bonnie Sue touched on this, and I think you kinda missed it a little bit, but she talked about esports, not sports. So when she was talking about sports, it was actually an email that we got about Florida.
County, as a sport.
Okay.
And the growth of it in Flor- in Florida schools. So I, and I really, really big, and a lot of money too, for the kids and sponsorships out there. So, um, I do think it is something that I would love for us to look into and possibly start a team for Taylor County. I'd like to get in on it as soon as we can, because I know we've got some really good gamers in Taylor County.
Well, there's some education behind it as well, that's the good part about it, it's not.
And it is a sport that would not be affected by coronavirus, because it is a distant, it's not a bus trip to another district. It's actually a, you know, an online server from, from where they start out at.
You got, you got, I'm sure you got the email.
Really cool. And just ask that we do our research, cause.
But it is something.
I know you've had more, but my firm's not.
It is something though that is.
I worry about, I just, I worry about the liability.
Of esports?
Well, it's, this is sanctioned, uh, it would be something.
Yeah, it is.
Through the school for this.
This is sanctioned sport, it's not something that we have to make the rules to, they're, they're already in existence, so.
Right, but I still just worry about the liability, I'm pretty sure if they're gonna suggest it, they've done some research, but I still think it offers some, but it does sound interesting.
Yes, and I think that it would be very exciting for us to, to begin the program. Um, sooner or later, it's coming to us and I'd like for it to come sooner, I think our kids would be excited about it. Uh, I think we would not have any trouble finding sponsors, I'm sure that, you know, there are plenty of people that are, um, to be over the program, that's what I'm saying. And, um, another thing about sports is, I, um, how's our, how are our teams doing for practicing over the summer? What is the plan for that?
We just started.
June first, right? And so both middle and high school?
They've been doing weightlifting, um, since school, even during this time, they've been doing small groups of weightlifting and all that.
So we're continuing.
Sorry, I haven't, I haven't heard, I don't, I haven't ran into anybody in middle school to find out, but what you've been telling me that he's doing two or three groups and they were full.
Yay.
Also, I was really excited to see the student that we had, the new enrollment student that graduated with her A A, right, Katie Richardson. And, um, that, that was very exciting to me. And I, I wondered at how many we had that graduated with industry certifications too, like how many industry certifications walk across that stage at the same time? And, um, and how many military, you know, kids also, you know, list of kids I was, so that's something that I, I think that when, when our kids graduate, when we are talking about, um, you know, their graduation. That's something that we wanna let people know as well at the same time.
We normally do that at the awards.
We do, we normally do it at the awards, but it would be nice to note it in the.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
We, we always, you know, do their honors, so if we could just say they're going in behind me, you know, they're on the.
Are they taking the temperatures for practice?
I don't, I don't think they're doing temperatures at weightlifting, I think B B T C is planning that temperatures, but I don't think they have the football players.
So they isn't giving you guidelines at camera?
Yeah, they got, they've got guidelines, but, um, like social distancing and cleaning and, you know, all of that. Um, you know, ask them to document everything that's going on in the weight room and everything, but I don't think temperature checking, I mean, they could be, but I don't think they are.
Anything else to mention?
Uh, that's good, that's good for me, just blessed to be here and see everyone.
Okay, um, I concur on, um, the parade and for graduation, and I was really, I just was amazed that the seniors were just so in tune, knowing where to sit and keeping their distance. That, it's, I don't know what Heather told them, you know, I don't wanna go there, but, but that was just amazing. And, and I did get a lot of feedback from a lot of people about how well that they felt that it went. Um, what about hurricane shelters? I know that they're saying that there's a possibility, have we designated more?
Yes, we have, Dan and Christie have met, uh, and they have been done a walkthrough, um, I think somebody came down from Tallahassee from EMS. But there's been a couple meetings at elementary school to plan for hurricane and, you know, if, if we had somebody show up with sentinels, what they need to do, spraying out, using more space. Uh, I know Ms. Lott walked around with them, so they have been, you know, and Christie emailed, emailed us, said, well, hurricanes, you got a big kid already, you know, but we need to be prepared. So give them credit for being prepared, I know there's a little tropical storm brewing right now and gonna go up, so.
Okay, uh, and I'm glad to know that we're, you know, already working on our kind of plans for next year, because that's, you know, we can't wait till August, the seventh day or night to put something in place. And, cause we know it, know it's coming and, um, I'm glad we've got a schedule that will possibly offer something blended, or whatever, um, comes, comes down from the state that says that we hit the guidelines that we have to go by. Also, with summer school, that, that's another thing, is if, if that happens, that we do, um, offer some this summer, you know, hopefully that'll give us an opportunity on some of the remediation that will help us before we go back. So, uh, I think it's a good possibility that that may happen, but, you know, we just have to, I've heard that in other counties, I'm, I'm sure it's probably coming here also. Uh, and then the only other thing is, uh, talking about graduating, back to graduation, um, I'm not sure how well Madison's graduation turned out, but I do know that they came, uh, Mr. What, what's his name came down, Mr. Snell.
Stahlmaker.
Stahlmaker, came down and talked with, uh, Danny and looked over the plans and all of how we, we were doing ours, so.
They did, they did it like ours, and my daughter-in-law was there, she dealt with it, she said it worked really good, but what they didn't have, that we have, was the, the big video, um, the live stream. And she said that was really made theirs a lot nicer, but they did have this good sound system and they did set up the field just like we did.
Good, okay, and other than that, somewhere along the line, we've got to get back into figuring out what we're gonna do with the surplus over at, um.
We did.
The Perry primary, take care of that.
All right, thank you, um.
Can I ask one quick question since that was just talking about the shelters? Um, is there any information coming down from emergency management far as how we want to deal with our indigenous population due to coronavirus? Because there's been an increase in our community, and I know they're open to the shelters and I, I would not say that, you know, we deny them. But I know last year there was some concerns far as individuals with certain health concerns, not having the transportation to get to the special shelters. And I know that was a big topic because of Michael, but is there anything coming down from the state regarding it?
I double-checked with Christie, I vaguely remember the meeting that coming up, about quite a hundred percent. But best I remember is they would be transported to another, um, special needs shelter.
Is that the medical or this, is that those with medical? Okay, so they will be offered transportation?
Um, I'm quite a hundred percent, I'll double-check with Christie, but I'm, the best I remember is they would be transported.
Well, I just ask that we try to see what we can figure out with that, because if it's gonna come down to where our employees are having to work the shelters, I think our employees need to have, our, our employees need to have that information.
And I know Christie, you know, she encourages everybody to go ahead and register ahead of time, you know, if you've got those health special needs, to go ahead and let them know so they can be planted. That's one of the biggest things I've heard, probably, because it asks people to get registered and know.
Okay, all right, you asked, as it kind of goes down here, I just got a couple of things, first of all, we've all made mention of the graduation. And, uh, I think that once again, it went really well, in my opinion, and I've not met anybody who can have good expertise to say about the, about the graduation. And I don't think that, uh, I think that our seniors are gonna top-notch graduation, I mean, really honestly, and, uh, we're proud of them, we hope them the best. And, uh, so maybe we can build upon what has happened this year, even though it's been turned upside down, but maybe some good will come out of it for the future, even in our graduation. Um, I, I look for us, by two weeks from now, when we meet again, that we're, we're gonna begin to have to pick up a little steam ahead, you know, having some directions from the DOE more. Try and see which plans, what plans, and how we're gonna implement it. I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be an easy task, I think it's gonna be something that everybody's gonna have to work real hard on. Uh, and with that said, about graduation, I appreciate all of those who worked, cause y'all make it happen. A lot of work went into that, a lot of work for people on the field during the graduation, and I just say thank you to all of those who were, was part of that.
And thank you to the, uh, Sibyl's florist for the flowers and all the different people that, you know, went, I don't know, did we do the waters or something like that, I don't know?
Wayne did the waters, and then she called him to the waters for a practice. And Heather's got, um, articles she sent me today, and she's gonna send out to everybody.
A lot of work went into it, and I just wanna say thank you to everybody who helped.
And I know I asked about Dan, but I completely, I forgot that Dan had a thought that was graduating.
I had to, I had to.
That's right, I forgot about that, and I thought about that, but he was not working, he was actually, he was celebrating.
He was sitting there, I saw a picture of him sitting at his chair.
I thought about it after the fact, I'm like, that's.
I wonder if when he walked up, and he walked out, you know, real casual, like, you know, it's like, usually he's like, you know, that, that's cool.
The, the only other thing, I, I did next trip over, I know that we had talked about this in our previous board meeting, uh, about the, the paving and so forth, uh, at the, uh, Perry primary school. Uh, it was good, that, that lane, it looked like a very professional job, marked off, um, I didn't see the concrete that was being poured, I just hope that that's, does give us some more room. I know it's not that much, but anyway, the job looked good and, uh, for understanding, you're, you're, everybody's good with it, I mean, it's a good job.
Yes, sir, great job.
All right, Ms. Ball, did you have something?
Yes, I, I just wanted to confirm the order statute regarding your budget meeting, only required for the meeting to occur at five o'clock, so you're five twenty-five, four o'clock deadline.
I sent an actual message, and she said, yeah, she can change it.
The only other thing, is there an opportunity for any public to submit a question while the meeting's ongoing, while you're doing it tonight?
We, I checked recently with Ms. Pearson and we haven't had any, we didn't have any emails before five o'clock. And I checked with her thirty minutes ago, double-checked one more time, make sure we haven't had any.
I just wanted to make sure we closed the meeting and we, and board as best we can this time.
Give me one more.
Five forty-five is due at?
Yes.
All right, with that said, uh, do we have a motion second that we.
Well, he wanted us to wait a minute.
Check and see if there's any questions.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
We have none at this time, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you, uh, with that said, do I have a motion second that we turn?
Second.
Call the motion.
Second.
Matthew second, did you hear, if you favor say aye.
Aye.
And even this.
This takes a minute or two to finish, and so it could be.
I had a little story about the budget, here's.